Thank you, everyone. Nick, I believe you have something to read for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's chairman.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending a certain provision of the overwhelming law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Board Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and/or review this meeting while progress is broadcast by BCAT Government Cable Access Television, BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388, meeting number 1792777976. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'd like to read something before we get started tonight. I believe you all got an email, and I'd like to address that right now. I would like to address the comment that I made while talking to Rachel Lonato at our last meeting. I've known Rachel since she's been 10 years old, and I mistakenly slipped into casual banter with her. My comment was ill-advised. It was not intended to offend anybody and be appropriate to Ms. Lobato or others. I've spoken to Ms. Lobato about the matter. She is not offended in any way. I commit to maintain a level of professionalism at these meetings. I commit to being more thoughtful and awareness of others while I speak at these meetings and my daily interactions. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let the board know we do have a couple of public hearings this evening. So Selectment Priest will be monitoring the comments on Facebook Live and the WebEx chat, and I will monitor the phone line at 781-270-1635. And as a reminder to the board, all votes will be required to be done by roll call for the virtual meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have Chief Kent here with an appointment in the police department.
Thank you, Paul. Seems like we're doing these regularly this month. Officer Bernie Skippeletti, Sergeant Bernie Skippeletti retired last Sunday. He was appointed a special police officer in June of 1986, a permanent intermittent in September of 88, and a full-time police officer in February of 1989. He was appointed safety officer in September of 1998, and that's a position he held until he was promoted to sergeant in June of 18, almost three years ago. Bernie spent his last three years as a 412 supervisor, where he did a wonderful job. Prior to that, as safety officer, he was second to none in this community and frankly in Metro Boston. He was at one time the president of the Massachusetts Safety Officers Association. I was discussing with him as his retirement approached, he probably had three generations of children that he taught traffic safety to, school bus safety, things of that nature. Just a wonderful man who did a great job. And that was some Bernie's career up. Captain Kirchner told me one time that Bernie was the type of guy, the day he got hired, give him his badge, his gun, and the radio, and you never had to worry about him again. He just did a great job for this town and this department for 35 years. That being said, we would like to have him appointed a special police officer tonight, Paul. So I recommend retired Sergeant Bernard Skippeletti to the position of special police officer.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations to Bernie on a well-deserved retirement. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Bernard Skippeletti to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved?
Second.
I'll move to second and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan, you're on mute. Yes? Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
I saw, yes, 5-0-0 favor. Who would like to speak first? Mr. Tigges, you work with them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you look at Bernie's record, Bernie is a wealth of knowledge in not only the traffic safety area, and you think about the hundreds, if not thousands, of children. He's taught how, you know, with the school bus safety, his years at Safety Town down at the mall. And he's expert at putting car seats in. I know he's run numerous car seat clinics. Apparently, he's helped Mr. Hogan and will be helping me next few months. But he's just, he is, as Captain Kirchner said, you never had to worry about him. Just a wealth of knowledge, a true gentleman. And it's, he'll be an asset out there on the street when he works details, because he's that type of guy. He'll just respond and do whatever is necessary to make sure things go smoothly. So I want to congratulate Bernie for his 32-plus years in the department. Great guy, and I look forward to seeing him out there.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thank you, Jim, for leading into what I was going to thank him for, because although there's several generations of kids that he taught safety issues, there's at least a couple of generations of grandparents who had to be taught how to put those new car seats together without having an engineering degree. So for that, I thank Bernie with all my heart. Thank you, Bernie, and congratulations.
Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Bernie and I come on the job just about the same time. I had the pleasure of working with him on many calls over my career. Like Jim said, Bernie is certainly a true gentleman. He's a consummate professional, whether he's in uniform or out of uniform. Just a great guy. And I wish him nothing but the best, and welcome to the club, Bernie.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I happen to be one of those generations that Mr. Skippeletti taught safety to as a kid growing up here in town. And I'm still here, so we did something right. But obviously, I wish him the best in retirement and look forward to seeing him out working those details.
Thank you, gentlemen. The only I'm going to say very quickly, Chief, is you lost another good one.
Absolutely.
We're losing the good ones left and right, and hopefully these kids are learning from the older kids before they leave. And all I can really say is Bernie, you're a great guy, and I wish you all the best out there. I hope to see you on a traffic detail, so you can pull me over for the first time, though. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have our town clerk, Amy Warfield, here to ask the board for a vote to approve the warrant for the town election.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have a town election on April 10, and that will be up at the high school. And so I'm just asking you to sign this warrant so that we can host it and run an election.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions. This is going to be the same as the last elections with the pandemic that's going on. We've got the two different gyms, the six-foot apart. What are we doing for outside for the candidates that are running? Can they be there? Can they not be there? These are questions that are being asked, so.
Yeah.
I'll ask the boss.
Nope, no problem. Yes, so they will be able to set up tents outside. They should be, they will be outside of the 150-foot marker and should be keeping themselves about six feet apart in terms of their election workers. The other thing, like they have done at the previous town election last June, was that they also, many of them set up tables so that as people were coming down, there was distancing between the voters and the candidates. And I just ask that everybody be aware of that. We will be, as of right now, we probably will be in the two gyms, the wooden gym and the rubber gym, and have precincts 1 through 4 in the rubber gym and precincts 5 through 7 in the wood gym, with all those precautions, with at least one person per precinct that's also cleaning and wiping down booths. The other thing, too, is that with all of our elections last year, the custodial staff at the high school did a terrific job with cleaning and wiping down constantly. And I really appreciated all of their efforts with that as well. And I think that's one reason why we had a safe and successful election, and some of the other parts of it.
Thank you. One more question. What about early voting?
Well, we, early voting is something that has to be set up by the legislature for every election. The legislature voted that early voting would be done on town elections that were prior to March 31, in that we are, on April 10, we do not qualify for running early voting. So we will have absentee ballots available. I'm putting their applications online already. We will have some at the COVID clinics. We will be doing, having them available at the senior center for the grab-and-goes. We have distributed them to all of the multi-unit facilities as well. And so anybody who needs an absentee ballot, they can either get an application, or if they want to stop by town hall, if they want to call and let us know they're out there, we will bring out applications to them. I'm also trying to work on some kind of mailbox or something where they could be outside, where people could just pick them up, but we don't have that ready yet.
Great, thank you. All right, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
You're on mute. I think you said all set.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, obviously, you and your office do a fantastic job of running our elections here in town, and as a board, we thank you for that. I wish the legislature would, you know, I mean, we get bad weather in April, too. It's not like this isn't doing one. In terms of how last year went, and I know that, you know, your volunteers tend to skew in the more senior range, you know, but we had a lot of younger volunteers last year. Are you anticipating the same level of help this year?
Yeah, we're still calling in on a lot of our teens to help, and especially since it's a Saturday, it makes it easier to have those people available. The other thing is, we also did get a good number of new, slightly younger volunteers. And so those people are also very interested in continuing, so we have a lot of that. Some of our older volunteers are getting their COVID shots in time, and so they are, you know, saying, if I have both of my vaccinations, can I, you know, and I've waited my two weeks or three weeks after my second shot, can I come in? So yes, there's a lot of people that I think we'll be able to pull from safely.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Runyon?
A quick question, Mr. Chairman. Amy, on the backup material we have, you have one position at Housing Authority, but on your webpage, there's a second position.
Yeah.
Are we missing something here?
No, actually, what happened is legislation got, the governor signed a bill on January 14, which finally determined that that one position on the Housing Partnership or Housing Authority had to be a tenant. So I have a communication from our legal, from Lisa Mead, who said that this would be the time to take that one-year position and turn that into the tenant appointment position. So what will be happening in the next, that position will be held by the person until the April 10 election. But during that timeframe, Housing Authority will be coming up with a couple of a point, a couple of recommendations for appointments, and then you all, the supporter of Selectmen, are charged with making that appointment. So that's what will happen. We will convert that position now to a tenant position, which is what's required in the law.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, again, you've done a great job with, under these, you always do a great job, but under these strange circumstances, you've done an unbelievable job. So congratulations to you and your staff for that. Joe asked my question about early voting, and then I guess Nick touched upon, I want to make sure you had enough election work as considering what's going on. So you think you're okay staff-wise?
Yeah, I think so, because usually our turnout for town elections isn't quite as heavy as a presidential election. So we'll be able to work with what we've got. I'm feeling pretty confident that we have enough people.
Okay, nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sagorino, any comments on this, or just need a motion?
Nothing further from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, gentlemen, I need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion, then we approve.
Motion by Bob, second by Nick. Roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Amy, thank you. Wonderful job again.
Well, and thank you, gentlemen, very much for all your support, too.
Okay. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board had recently requested an update on the new Burlington transportation program. So we have our COA Director, Marge McDonald, here to provide you with some data on the first year of operations and answer any questions the board may have. I see a bunch of members of the Town Transportation Committee in the audience here. I know that they are scheduled to be on your agenda in a couple of weeks, and we will have Marge back at that time to participate in that discussion as well when you guys come back to the next meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know that. But at this point, Mr. Chairman, if we could turn it over to Marge McDonald?
Absolutely, Marge.
Thank you. Before I get started on that, I just wanted to throw a quick shout out to my staff. We have been inundated with phone calls for the last two weeks ever since the governor told everybody at a press conference to call the COAs for information about their COVID vaccines. And it literally got so bad, we could not answer the phone, and we had to just let things go to voicemail. So they have done an outstanding job of staying calm and getting back to people as quickly as possible. And a couple of them have been something of punching bags, and they've been taking it quite well. So this whole thing is very frustrating, and they've done a great job, so I just want to throw that out there. We did have a clinic last Wednesday and got to see 100 of the folks we have not seen in a year, which was amazing. That said, thank you for indulging me on that. We are coming up on our one-year anniversary this weekend for this program. And we started out okay, considering, you know, it's just a brand-new program. As you can see from the, I think you all have the stats. So we started out okay. March looked really great, and then all of a sudden, COVID hit, and we shut down, and the numbers just got horrible. Thank you, Whitney. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So March was great. It looked like we were going to be really successful. And then April, all the way until September, just looked awful. And then as things start to lighten up, we definitely started to pick up a bit. You'll notice that the GoGo Grandparent rides went down after October, and I think that's just literally the type of people that are using the program. You know, it's older folks that aren't going to go out in the wintertime. I don't, I think that's, that will pick up again, I'm sure, you know, come April. Plus with the surge, I'm sure they are all hibernating. So that's going, so the numbers are definitely picking up, if you notice. We are almost, we doubled since September, or tripled, actually, since September. I don't do math well. So I'm really excited about what the numbers are looking like. But there's a lot of room for improvement. We're not reaching everybody. So again, looking at the ridership trends, we had that dip for COVID, but now we're doing really, really well. And we don't have January's numbers yet, but I'm going to bet they're probably much higher than December's were. So not as many people using GoGo. Most people are using the Lyft program. And again, the GoGo is the concierge service for people without smartphones. And anyone who has a smartphone, we put them on Lyft. It's going really well so far. We've had one person who's come off the program because it wasn't going well for them. But we will, I know what, I know what happened. I know what's wrong with that, and we'll do my best to fix it as we go. Can you go to the next slide, Whitney? So we know the program's successful. We called it a pilot. It's time to move on from that. So we're going to do a lot more outreach now that we're getting out of COVID. We're getting towards there. So one of the things that I'm planning on doing is getting onto BCAT, doing a PSA, you know, for them to run whenever they have room for it, just talking about the program, how to get on it, how it works. And of course, as I do interviews with different people, I'll mention it some more. I was interviewed by Phil Gallagher and Linda McNamee during the late fall. I mentioned it then. We'll have BCAT put it on the scrolling, you know, the screen that scrolls, and make sure it's there as well. We'll put some brochures at Housing Authority, and I will reach out to people, helping people, make sure they know about it, so they're sending people over, and see if I can attend one of their meetings to talk about it, you know, answer any questions they might have. We'll also go out to the different affordable housings and make sure that there's brochures there. Maybe, you know, those are smaller, maybe mail something out to them so they see it. And just, you know, generally kind of hit all of those places, making sure everybody has seen the brochure and knows about it. You know, the aging population and the lower-income population definitely would find this useful. The last thing is, just as a working name, when we were doing the grant last year, I called it the Burlington Community Transportation Project Pilot, which is, in my own estimation, a pretty lame name and definitely needs something catchier. So I thought maybe we could do a naming contest and have people send names into us and then take a vote and see what the best names are. I believe John Denizio already has a name in his head that he thought would be a good one to use, so. So there's, we at least have one, anyway, as we go forward. Whitney, can we have the next slide? And this is more of John Denizio's info, but we do have approximately $205,000 in the account coming from the operating budget, the state funds and subsidies, as well as bus fees. So there is enough money in there for quite a while, even if this gets wildly successful, which I think it will. And that is it. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? We'll start off with Mr. Tigges. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marge, a quick question. What about, I don't know if it's in your game plan or not, but we're looking at those little icons. I didn't see anything for, like, I saw the affordable housing as one of the routes to go, but what about aggregate housing, like the apartment complexes? They may not necessarily be, fall under the umbrella of affordable housing, but there may be elderly or people who can't drive in apartment complexes. In other words, if you hit the management office, you could hit hundreds of people, you could notify hundreds of people by just notifying that office. And we offer a lot of newer complexes online in the recent years that are limited parking, so that might be another option, is to reach out to the, not just the original apartment complexes, but the newer ones that restrict parking. And then just one other question. What about Leahy? Are there any options or ways to connect with Leahy to get the word out as well?
I don't know. I can talk to the community benefits person about it. She would be the one that I most likely work with on that, but I can certainly ask.
All right, that's just it. I'd suggest reaching out to the aggregate housing units in town. You get a lot of, you know, notify a lot of people just, you know, by reaching out to the office and then just see if there's anything we can do with Leahy. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marge, how are you and Happy New Year?
Happy New Year. I'm fine, thank you.
I have a comment and a question. The comment, I'm sure you know this, and you're probably doing it, but I didn't see it on the outreach plan, your monthly newsletter.
Yes, it's in there. It's already in there.
Okay, very good. The second, the question is, I see what the balance is of 205,000. What do you anticipate over the next year, even if it gets going really good, what the actual cost and drawdown from that account will be?
I would imagine we're not going to get over 2,000 or even maybe three tops a month. I don't see it going over that, is my guess.
Okay.
At least for now.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, encouraging to see those numbers ticking up. Pretty well tuned in on the, you know, chatting with Marge at the board of directors meetings and so forth. So yeah, I'm encouraged by the last three months, and I think the outreach effort is going to be well worth it.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marge, my first question is around the ridership statistics slide. The costs that are there, are those the costs to the town, the total costs? What do those numbers represent?
Let me find them. Hold on. Moved everything. Sorry. The joys of working at home. Those are the total costs to the town.
Okay, so for all of the in-town ridership covers that we, the up to $10, was it right? Okay. All right. Excellent. And then I know, I know we're not talking about huge numbers of people here, but are we at all collecting any information on the demographics of the ridership at all? Do we have a sense outside of, you know, the senior citizens, who's also taking advantage of this program?
So I know who's on, I know who's in the program, but I don't know who's doing what. They don't, so Lyft has, they assign people numbers, and then, and each time somebody uses or takes a ride, they're assigned a different number, so they never have the same number. And everything's the latitude and longitude, so I don't know specifically where they're going. So I can't really trace it, but I can trace is who's using after-hours and weekends, and the weekend numbers are looking pretty good.
Okay, so there's definitely an uptick on the weekends?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, good to know. As I, as I think of this program and our general conversations around, you know, the concern of adding more cars to our roadways, you know, I'd love to continue, like, keeping an eye on the demographics. Obviously, if it's skewing seniors who need rides placed, that makes sense to me. You know, if we start seeing younger folks or people who, you know, just don't own a car, trying to get places, you know, the broader conversation of what other transportation-based modes could we possibly provide here in town would come into effect, which is obviously a much larger conversation, but having this as our initial, like, you know, data set, it's something I just want to keep an eye on. So thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was wonderful. A lot of information there for us. So the program seems to be doing well. Everyone seems to be using it. Things are looking better for us, so I'm happy. Thank you for putting the time and effort into it. Whitney, thank you for the graphic slideshow. This is just an update, so we don't need a vote or approval for this. Paul, anything else to add?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that you will notice on the document that we broke out weekend riders. So people have commented very favorable about the ability to use the service on the weekends, which was not always possible with the B-line. And just lastly, I'd like to ask Marge, while you have an audience here and on television, could you just run through the eligibility requirements? So if anybody's out there...
So if anybody's out there watching, they can spread the word.
Sure. Anyone 60 and over, anyone with a disability or 300% of the federal poverty level, which is about $60,000.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, Marge, great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our next agenda item, we have the Town's Conservation Administrator, John Keely, here to discuss a conservation restriction at Seven Wheeler Road with the board. John?
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, board. So this is a proposed conservation restriction by the developer of the self-storage facility, right where Wheeler and Blanchard come together. So a conservation restriction, just to recap, is basically a formal process to protect the land. It doesn't give the land to us. We're basically the holders of a deed restriction. It's a formal process that has to be approved by the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So at this point, the Rehm and Bronstein has drafted up this, this document for us to approve, both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. If you guys are okay with it, then they send it to the state for final review. If they approve it, then it comes back to us and you, you sign it and the Conservation Commission signs it. So in this case, it's about a nine-acre section of the parcel where they're building the self-storage facility down there. And it's on both sides of what used to be called Wheel, let's see, the road that goes out to.
Rounder.
Rounder Way, Rounder Way, thank you. So it's on either side of that. Most of it's on the left-hand side, but it's also the portion on the right where they're actually doing the construction. That's about it. So it's, and the wet, it's all wetlands and floodwaters. It's basically, it's protected, but it's not the sort of conservation area where we would put trails or anything like that. It's much too wet.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll start with some questions. Mr. Runyon.
I, it was several pages of what was not very understandable to me when I was reading there. I, I got some of it. I got the gist of it. If John Keely said it's okay, it's okay with me.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Priest.
Of course, you call me. Second. So John, just to, just to understand, so we're, we're turning this marked parcel. I'm looking at page 73 of our backup, which is, well, it's, it's one of the maps, I apologize, but there's a, it's a red outline over a topographical area. That's the area that's being placed into conservation?
So right, it'll be a conservation restriction, which is basically a deed restriction. The, Jumbo will still own it, but they basically need to protect it in perpetuity. And to Mike, Mike Runyon's point, Town Council has reviewed it as well. It's not just me.
Although we do take what you say very, very highly, so I mean, you know, it's great that the Town Council waited, don't get me wrong. And so where, where in relationship to the nine acres are they building their storage facility?
So if you're looking at the, looking at the site from Wheeler Road, it's at the far right, closest to the buildings, there's, like, I think it's 80 and 82 Blanchard Road. So it's up close to those buildings.
Okay.
So it's on the far right of the parcel.
Okay.
Which would be the east.
All right. All right, no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
It is under construction. If you go down there, it's well underway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, John. My question has actually been answered, but I just wanted to restate what Mike just said. As long as legal counsel agrees with John, then I'm good with that.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the question I had was, is this, if Town Council had reviewed it, but that's been answered. And to concur with Selectman Runyon, I've worked with John on a couple of different things and I, I value his opinion. And if John's okay with this, I'm okay with it.
John, you very highly recommended it. So I, what am I gonna say? I've been down there a couple times. It looks good. They've got all the appropriate rocks out in front of the buildings and no dirt goes onto the street. They've got everything they need to do as far as the building site goes and across the street. Where they're gonna put this restriction area, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, so I will definitely be in favor of this.
Great, thanks.
Well, at this point, Mr. Sagorino, any questions or any comments?
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. John, do you, are you looking for a vote from the board tonight?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right, one clarification. I know there are three different versions of the restriction. Are we just doing one vote for all three?
Gentlemen, I'll just say, I'll take a raise of hands on that one and if you all want to vote this, both of us all at one time, just raise your hand and I'll count that as the, yeah, okay. So it's gonna be one vote for all three articles. But I need to get a motion to approve in a second.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the recommendation of the conservation restrictions presented tonight and approved by legal counsel and John Keely.
Motion by Bob, second by Mr. Runyon. Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. 5-0-0. Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this will be back before you again in a few weeks, just for a signature. Thank you.
Betty and Paul, before you leave, do we have to, can you just come in and we assign it or do we need to come to a meeting?
I would say we should come to a meeting, Mr. Chairman, just to do the formal vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. Trying to keep you out of a meeting, John.
That's okay. No problem.
All right. Thank you. Paul, moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have before you two requests by the Disability Access Committee for the use of funds from the parking fines. So the board is aware. I checked in with John Denizio and the current balance in the fund is $109,000 approximately. I'll now turn it over. Is our Veterans Director, Chris Hanafin, here with us? Let's see. I don't know that I see Chris, so.
Is anybody else here?
I am. This is Mara Mazaka.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi, Paul. Hi, Select Board. Yes, we are here. I am here as a co-chair of the Disability Access Commission to get approval for two items, for use of the Handicap Parking Fine Fund. The first approval that we are seeking is for $12,000 and that is for the AutoMark voting machines. And it's to upgrade the software for each town election for the next three years, starting with this year, then 2022 and 2023.
Right. Paul, should we take these separately or do we take them all at once at the end?
I would recommend you take them separately, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, so we'll start with this one. And Mara, thank you very much. I'm sure I said that at the beginning. But we're gonna comment on this one and then we'll vote on it and then we'll move to the next one. Does that work for everybody? Yep, okay. So let's comment on this one. Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking through the backup material, the, I see for the $12,000 for the AutoMark software update, but having a little difficulty seeing the second, what the second project is.
Okay, we're voting on the first one now, Jim. We'll get to the second one afterwards.
I don't know what it is.
Well, that's, we're only, we're only voting on this one $12,000 right now. But we're not voting on all of it together.
All right, so we're only voting on one tonight?
On one right now.
Okay, all right, all right. I was under the impression it was two and I only saw one. All right, never mind that. That answered my question.
Okay, Mr. Hogan.
No, I supported these. I was at the meeting and the AutoMark is something we've been supporting for a, a number of years now. A number of which I don't know what it is. I can't remember, but it is our contribution to make sure that these machines that the disabled use are kept up to date so that when we go in to use them in the elections that they function properly. So I support this.
Okay. Mr. Runyon?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I, I support, you know, ensuring access for all, so, you know, there's no, you know, real question for me from that perspective. My question I, I kind of have is around, you know, is this something that we can build into the budget so that we don't have to vote on it every couple of years? Or I feel like this is something that should just happen automatically and that they shouldn't have to come seeking funds for us for?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
They, they could. I mean, there's no reason not to accept that we have these funds that come to us from people who illegally park in handicap spots and we have the money available. So it, it, it keeps Amy from having to put these few thousand dollars into her budget. Because as you can see, we're covering a couple of years. She would have to put this in her budget every year. So six of one, half a dozen of the other, I suppose, is the best answer.
Sure, yeah. I just didn't know from a, from, you know, Paul and John, you know, standpoint, if it made sense to say, okay, this amount of money from, you know, illegal parking is gonna be automatically, you know, diverted to these funds. It would just make life easier for folks. If not, then I mean, I'm happy to make the vote every couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen, I, I'm gonna just tell you this. I enjoy having you come in for something every year. So we could put it in the budget if that made life easier for a lot of people, but I just like, I just like, this, this is like the feel-good story for me. I mean, when people, people come in and they ask this stuff and we know we have the money. It's not an issue. It's gonna pass. So for me, I enjoy this. So we're gonna take a, a vote on this particular item right now. I'll need a motion in a second on this.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the $12,000 for the use of the upkeep of the AutoMark election voting machines to cover 21, 2021, 22, and 23.
Second.
Second by Nick. Roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Yes. So there's that one. That's all.
Thank you.
Maureen, what was the second one?
The second one is for $15,000 and this, the Recreation Department came to the Disability Access Commission asking us if we would put some money towards making the waiting pool at Simons Park accessible. And we're in a partnership, we have been in partnership with the Rec Department to make all of the parks in town accessible. And this year, we are adopting Simons Park as our next project. And this $15,000 would go towards a ramp that would lead to the deck on the waiting pool so that people that had mobility challenges would be able to access and get into the waiting pool much easier. So then the cost is $15,000. I believe, Bob, you can probably speak to this too. The Marshall Simons Trust will be also, I think, putting money in towards this project as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mara, Mara hit all the high points. The estimated project cost is gonna be about $40,000. The three partners in this, if, if all goes well, is the Recreation Department, the Simons Trust, and the Disability Access. And the request is to take $15,000 out of the Handicap Parking Fine Fund for this particular project. Chris and Brendan and I were up at Simons Park a month or two ago. I can't remember exactly now, and walking over it. And it is for an accessible walkway to the waiting pool. The plan includes accessible route from the accessible parking spots and an accessible ramp to the pool gate. There's a little, a few other things there, the, the new pad and everything. So it's a pretty expensive project and I, I support it as do the other members of the commission.
Thank you. Jimmy? Do you want, you, did you get everything that the second one's about for $15,000?
Yeah, yeah, it was just the way I, I had it in my backup, but no, I absolutely support this 100%. This is just, is this just for access to the pool deck itself or is there? But what about access into the pool? Is that needed or?
That may be, that may be part of an extended process, but the $15,000 we're asking for now is up to the pool. But I think there is discussions going on about making that ramp into the pool a little more extensive. But so this is, this is a few other things getting to that point.
Okay, great. No, I fully support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I really like this one, like this one a lot. And I, I, I think it's needed. I've been up there a few times with my, my grandchildren recently. So I fully support the transfer of funds for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
What'd you say?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. Everything's been answered for me.
All right. Before I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, if I just may say, the Disability Access Commission, it, it takes a lot of this stuff very seriously. And usually by the time the request comes to the Board of Selectmen, it has been talked through and thought out quite well. And, and, you know, they don't throw money at projects just because we have it. They're very conscious of the fact that, you know, someday we may not have this much money available if people stop parking in handicap parking spots. So I applaud them for the work that they do on these projects. And with that, I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the use of $15,000 from the Handicap Parking Fine Fund for this project in conjunction with the Burlington Parks and Recreation.
Second.
I made the second. All those in favor are going to be Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So before we move on to the next one, as I was saying, if you want to put this on an article for, for they just take the funds out, we can do that. But I do like having Mara come in or hopefully we get back to some normalcy here and I don't sit in this room over here all by myself. I'd like to see people come in again and that's what I enjoy. But Mara, if you'd like to talk about that, please feel free to just get in touch with myself or Mr. Sagorino to see how that works, okay?
Thank you, Joe. I will. And thank you all for voting, approving these funds. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible for me to ask the board's indulgence, indulgence to move one of our public hearings forward on the agenda? I understand that one of the participants has a couple of public hearings scheduled for tonight and we were just hoping that we could make that possible for him by getting started. It was a 6:30 public hearing, so. I would appreciate it if we could do that.
I'd make that motion.
Make a motion and take a vote on it. Mr. Hogan made the motion in a second. Mr. Runyon, we're gonna do a roll call vote quickly. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, go right ahead, Paul.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If I could start by asking Selectmen Tigges to read the advertisement notice of the hearing?
Certainly. The Burlington Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 8th, 2021, at or after 6:30 PM pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 166A, Section 7, and 207 CMR 4.01 and others and applicable federal law on the application for transfer of control of the cable television license of RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts, also known as RCN, to Don't Speak Infrastructure Partners. RCN's FCC Form 394 License Trans application and application materials are available for public inspection at the Town Hall. Issuing authority will consider the proposed change of control based on review of application. Issuing authority will consider the proposed change of control based on review of applicants managerial, technical, financial, and legal ability to operate the cable system pursuant to the existing RCN license. Thank you, Selectmen Tigges. I just have a few words that I need to add in here. This public hearing is regarding the proposed transfer of control of the cable television renewal license held by RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC to Stone Peak Infrastructure Partners, Stone Peak. This hearing is being held consistent with the regulations of the Massachusetts Cable Division. Public notice of this hearing was published in accordance with the regulations of the Massachusetts Cable Division. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn this over to Whitney Haskell, who in her role as Budget and Procurement Director for the town, is the town's liaison on the cable contracts. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Whitney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Whitney. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So as Paul said, this agenda item addresses the transfer of control of one of the parent companies of RCN, which is one of the three cable providers that holds a license in town. So when a transfer of control like this happens, we're required to hold a public hearing. We're not looking for a vote tonight. This is just the hearing. Following this hearing, there'll be a period of information gathering and questions. And once that's done, we'll be back here for a vote. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Attorney William Solomon, our Special Counsel for Cable Matters, who will help lead us through this hearing. Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Whitney. Good evening, board members, town administrator, and others. William Solomon, you're a special counsel for this matter. Do we have some memos that set things out? I'm gonna ask the representative for RCN, Vice President Tom Steele, and the representative for the transfer, Radiant Holdings and transferee Stone Peak to speak. I'll just mention that this is governed by the Federal Cable Act and Massachusetts state regulation. And it's not a renewal process. We're not changing the license. If the license transfer control is transferred.
Excuse me, Mr. Solomon. Excuse me. I can just about hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can get closer.
I'm just, I'm stretching here.
So the.
Well, that's much better, thank you.
Great, thank you. The process is governed by the Cable Act, federal law, and mass state regulation. And there are four standards that the board considers when it votes on this matter. Whether the party that's getting the control through the transfer has the management experience, the technical expertise, the financial capability, and the legal ability to operate the cable system, the RCN cable system in the town of Burlington. So that'll be the standard. The applicants will be discussing why they meet that standard. So let me introduce Tom Steele again, Vice President of RCN. And Tom can introduce the representatives of Radiant Holding, which now controls the RCN license in Burlington. And that's proposing to transfer that control to Stone Peak Infrastructure. So Tom, if you would update the board on what the transfer is about and why it's in the town's interest to approve the transfer.
Good evening. As I said, my name's Tom Steele. I've been with RCN for a number of years to a couple of renewals here in Burlington. And most recently, back in 2016, we were owned at that time by an investment company. And another investment company bought us. They retained the same management company that we had for the years previous. And now we're coming into 2021. And yet another investment company is looking to add that investment company's interest. And same, with the pledge that the same management team will stay in place. So I'll be here. Customers will see no change. And Mike Nielsen will speak on behalf of Stone Peak and fill you a little bit more on the details of the impact of the transfer. Mike?
Hi there, I'm Mike Nielsen. I'm at a little law firm here in Washington DC. And I'm representing Stone Peak, who's the transferee. And we've sent voluminous materials. And rather than walking through those, I'd like to just give you kind of my own quick sense of what I think is going on. And hopefully this will address all four points, the standards here. So look, the first thing I want to say, as Tom mentioned, is that from your perspective as the franchise authority, nothing really changes, right? RCN is not going away. RCN's ultimate owner, ultimate controlling interest is going to change from one private equity fund to another. But RCN is going to remain the franchisee. RCN is going to remain responsible for compliance. RCN is going to be the entity that sort of, you know, is the competitive cable operator in town. And so what I think that means is that both in terms of legal qualifications and at least initially in terms of financial qualifications, you can look to RCN itself. And I think it's unquestioned that RCN sort of has both the legal and the financial qualifications to continue operating a cable company. So the second thing is that from the customer's short term perspective, again, nothing changes, right? There are some private equity funds that go around looking for distressed assets that they, that they think kind of need improvement in some large way. And in this case, Stone Peak chose this particular investment because it thought that RCN was actually really well run. And so there are no plans to change the operations. There are no plans to immediately change or to change the management team. So the folks who are managing, including Tom, are gonna stay. And the services are going to remain exactly the same when this is approved. And so in terms of the managerial qualifications to run a cable system, again, we can rely on RCN. And Stone Peak intends to do that. But from the customer's longer term perspective, you know, this, I think that this transaction promises to make additional resources available to RCN to help it improve service, right? So again, Stone Peak in particular among private equity funds has a history of, you know, longer term holding of companies and of trying to sort of make resources available for them to help them grow, which then of course goes back to Stone Peak's own investors, right? So most recently, they've invested and held onto the investment of a company called Exinet, which makes equipment used for wireless carriers who have capacity needs in certain areas. And so again, if you look at the history of what Stone Peak does, it kind of, it likes to stick around and help folks grow. And of course, you know, the more resources that are available to RCN, the better things are for the town. So in the long term, I think this is sort of a good thing. And again, although I don't think you need to look to Stone Peak for financial ability to run a cable system, additional resources are a good thing. And Stone Peak now manages $29 billion of its investors' funds. And then one last observation. The corporate form of this we sent over in the application, you know, takes a couple of pages. And it has some boxes and some arrows pointing in different directions. And the key point here is that Michael Durrell, who's Stone Peak's co-founder, is the guy who's going to be ultimately in control. And a lot of these, a lot of these other boxes and arrows that you're going to see there have to do with some of the passive investors that you bring along as part of a private equity deal like this. You know, again, to help both finance the transaction itself and to help, you know, make additional resources available. So please don't be concerned by the org chart. It's actually pretty simple and it goes right up to Michael Durrell. So that's, that's what I've got. But I'm happy to answer, you know, whatever questions you have and be of whatever help I can be.
Thank you. Mr. Sagarino, where would you like to go from here? Questions and answers or?
Mr. Chairman, why don't we see if there are any questions from the board members? And then you can open it up to the public.
Well, we're gonna start with Mr. Priest.
Can you pass and come back to me? I'm still thinking.
Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question per se, but I just wanted to say hi to Tom Steele. He and I go back many years talking about cable television contracts and issues. So if Tom is still involved and as he says, if he's staying on board, I'm comfortable with what's going on with this transaction. So hi, Tom, and how are you doing?
I'm doing good, Bob, thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, if I understood this correctly, and this might just sum it up in layman's terms, it seems like it's just a change in the financial operations at the top. But the operational, the operational activities themselves will stay the same. So it's just a financial change versus an operational change. Am I getting that right?
Michael Nielsen, you're on mute.
Mr. Nielsen, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
You're still on mute.
How about that?
There you go.
Man, this is embarrassing.
Welcome to my world.
It's, that's essentially right. It's a change of ultimate control, you know, several levels up in the company. But the company's going to remain the same.
I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was on the board in, I think it was 216, you said, Tom, when you, when you announced you're seeking approval for the merger. And at that time, you had told us that this was going to put you in a better position to provide better service to the community. Now, admittedly, I'm not a subscriber. But, you know, I don't think, I don't recall seeing any advertisements on television and rarely do I see an RCN truck in town. So can you show me, could you highlight maybe some of the improvements you've made to, in Burlington since 2016?
When the, you know, we're here for a cable license. And in that regard, we improved our service with some TiVo boxes and some delivery of enhanced services. But most of the money that we spent and most of the advancements that we made in the last couple, few years is the area of internet access. And we, we sort of pushed the envelope for the other providers, even for Verizon. Like being early, back in 2017, I think we started to provide a gig service available to the homes. And that's certainly something that with the pandemic and of late, you know, in just in general, the way people are approaching the entertainment world, internet access is becoming increasingly important. And in general, we improved our customer service, hiring more people, setting up more service centers, in maintaining the network to the quality that it's at now. So we, I think the biggest investment though was in the area of the internet access.
Okay, so with the, with your request tonight, do you see RCN expanding on those successes you outlined?
I do. I've listened to Mike at many of these hearings. And I know Stone Peak has already talked to our management team, of course. And they seem anxious to expand and they seem anxious to improve the quality of our network, more fiber, maybe fiber for the home in the future. That kind of an approach which they're willing to invest in.
Okay, all right, Tom, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Priest, you ready?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I actually have no questions. I'm sure I could sit here and make something up, but I won't, I won't waste time right now.
We like you guys. We like you.
All right. I have no questions. The ball may be answered by the chairman. All the questions that I asked.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Solomon, may I ask a few questions? Great, thank you. Just a few questions to Council Representative Mr. Nielsen. In the letter forwarding the transfer application, Stone Peak mentions that there's no current plans to change the local operation or structure of the operation or service, services offered. And you've made the same statement, I'm not sure. Qualified in different ways as to terms of current plans or plans you know of. But the first question would be, is Stone Peak committed to RCN's continued provision of cable services in Burlington? Not just, you know, today, tomorrow, next week, but continued provision of cable services in Burlington, at least through the 2026 current license.
Let me try to think of how I want to answer this and still remain Stone Peak's lawyer. Stone Peak is certainly committed to RCN and certainly committed to RCN's growth and success. I hate to sort of commit to a particular service, even a big one like cable service, for a particular amount of time. Because I think as Tom mentioned, the world is changing. And there may be by 2026, who knows what any cable company, be it Comcast or whomever is doing. So I, you know, I want to answer yes in that we are committed to RCN. But I don't want to sit here and say, you know, come hell or high water, we're going to be doing a particular mix of services until 2026. Because it may not, right? Who knows what the world will look like then? Is that fair?
It's, it doesn't necessarily meet the town's needs because the, you know, we're here because of a cable license. And the RCN's had a cable license since probably Tom, since 2000. And when, when, when RCN or any company provides cable service, there's nothing that says that you can't provide any other service that's allowed on that system. So you do provide, of course, internet service and there's.
Sure.
Internet service and there's telephone service. So, you know, in that sense, and the town doesn't, it hasn't, doesn't look to see whether or not it could regulate that or charge for that.
Yep.
The town gets from a, in this cable agreement is cable service. So it seems to me that, and that a commitment to continue providing service for the length of the license is a relevant consideration and important factor for a town to be able to roll.
I think that's a fair question. And I'm guessing that the answer will be yes. But why don't you, if you would, just let me go that and I can get that to you in writing, right? I don't want to, I, I don't think they want their lawyer being less than careful in making representations without checking with the first. But, but I'm, I think the answer will be yes.
Great. And attorney has a very fair answer. You, we, you know, it's maybe not a question you were expecting. And it's, and it's a, it's a, as you said, it's a significant question. And we, and I know I respect your answer here more than just saying something that you can't be fully confident on. So thank you all thoughtful. And we, I can put that in writing and if you could respond, that'd be great.
Sure.
Question two, as you mentioned, the transfer documents are quite extensive and complicated for anyone, even for an attorney who's not in, 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 in that area of corporate law. So for myself and for the board, would you be able to discuss in layman's terms how Stone Peak is financing its, its purchase of Radiant Holdings? So we understand, is it borrowed? And after you explain that, can you explain briefly why the town should be confident that that financial mechanism is such that it will not impact the, the RCN license here in Burlington?
Sure. So very simply, I think it was, and I wish I had my colleague Henry on the phone who can always remind me of the exact numbers. I think it was 8.3 billion, of which 3.5? Am I remembering this correctly, Tom? Tom's on mute. Some portion of it, I think a little less than half was in cash. And then some portion of the price involved assuming Radiant's debts, right? So there was a cash portion and there was an assumption of the debt portion of that. And so, you know, one of the things that, you know, Stone Peak is using, it's some existing investors' money. And then it's also sort of going around as he kind of does all the time and seeking new investors for this particular project. And, and, and that process is sort of happening right now. So we have, and one of the, one of the tricky things about this, just for, for whatever it's worth, is that the private equity firms don't have the same record keeping and don't keep their financials in the same way that a Comcast or a publicly traded company. So one of the things that we find in certain cases is, is, you know, statements. So one of the things that we've found in certain cases is, is, you know, statements, you know, statements from Stone Peak stating that it has sufficient resources that this won't impact the, the operating companies. But, but again, the basic answer to your question is one part cash, one part assuming existing debt. So no new debt.
And I would imagine that if the, the board approves the transfer, I would recommend that the transfer would be effective after the close of the corporate transaction. Is that also your understanding?
Well, we can't close until we get a sufficient number of, of approvals, right? So, so yeah, I think that that, we are, we are going around and, and getting approvals and, and we, we still need to get the FCC approval. I believe we've gotten Virginia approval. But, but we're hoping to do this in the second quarter of 2021. But yes, the, 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 we can approve once we get, excuse me, we can close once we get approval to close.
So when the town, if the town approves the transfer of control, that transfer, when does that transfer of control become effective?
So, so again, it's, it's, because there are multiple towns doing this, it'll be kind of whoever is left in line, maybe April or, or May, right? Sort of whenever we get that last one in, we then close for everything. Does that make sense?
And then let's say after the, the, the transfer, the control is transferred, at that point, there's a possibility, is there a possibility that sufficient investors would not be found?
No, I, no.
So how will the town know that, that, that Stone Peak has completed all of the corporate requirements to proceed ahead with its ownership after the town?
Oh, okay, Ken, you know, I, I think the, in, in terms of the, the, the process of syndication is something that could last some time. But that's literally just getting additional investors. I don't think it was, it wasn't necessary to finance the transaction itself. It's just sort of the more investors there are, the more resources you have going forward. But, but, but I don't think that sort of the completion of the syndication is something that you would need to worry about in terms of us being financed, of, of, of financing the transaction or, or if, you know, if, if nobody decided to be part of the syndication, the transaction still goes forward.
Control is transferred by the town, then, then, then at that point, Stone Peak would not, not under any circumstances come back and say, well, it's not proceeding ahead. In other words, once the town
That I can confidently say.
One last question. On the question of, which is, which is good, and it's what I've basically heard also so far, that Stone Peak's record is to hold property. It's not, they're not there to take out the resources and, and leave, leave a shell of a company. But other than Stone Peak's record and your representation, what would you tell the, the Board of Selectmen with respect to how they will be able to know that's not happening? In other words, what, how, how do we know after the transfer that the good record of Stone Peak and the good intentions don't change and the resources of RCN are being taken out without sufficient resources being in? What could I tell them or you tell them so that they can know that or monitor that in some way, apart from asking Tom Steele?
Look, I, I, I think the best way to look at these things is to look at what's happened in the past, right? And look at the, the energy investments and again, the telecom investments and kind of, you know, you know, is there a history of sort of pumping debt and flipping companies? Or is there not? And, and I think that that ought to provide more comfort than any kind of compliance plan or, 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 or anything that I, that I can say. And I think, you know, there, there's a track record there. I, I know that, that, that Astound, excuse me, Radiate, you know, looked at a bunch of different investors, different possible buyers, right? And, and I know that, that in the buying process, one of the things that Stone Peak tried to set itself apart from other potential buyers is that, you know, that they, that they are a company that sort of, that, that likes to take infrastructure assets and, and grow them over the medium to long term. Now, again, am I saying that they're going to hold on to this forever? That I don't know. But I think, I think the best way to get oneself comfortable is, is to take, is to look at what we've done in the past.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate the answers.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as, as the memo states, and as was stated by the town administrator, that unless there's a reason to continue the hearing, at the moment, I don't see that, I would recommend closing the hearing, keeping the record open until March, March 12th. And then setting up a date after March 12th, sometime in March, for the board to vote on, on the transfer. And the hearing's been very helpful. I appreciate the responses. And I will follow up on my query about the continuation of cable service with council.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Where was I? Is anybody on here from the public that would like to speak on this? I don't see anybody. Mr. Selectmen, go back to the correct, I was, just to take us any questions?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I have a kind of a technical question relative to closing a public hearing. How does it work if we close the public hearing but keep the record open?
That would be Mr. Sagorino.
I will defer to Attorney Solomon on this one. I don't believe that's something that we've done here in the past.
It's, it's, yeah, I, I have no history to remember it.
Yeah, well, yeah, there is a school of thought about keeping the, the hearing open. I do think we want to keep the record open. And so if the board practice, and it's, it's some wisdom there certainly, is to keep, is to, is to keep the hearing open, at the same time, allow people to comment. So with that approach, I would, though, recommend that the record stay open. And so my suggestion would be that we continue the hearing to a date certain and after March 12th, if that works for the board, have a continued public hearing, keep the record open until then, and at that point, close the hearing and have the vote. Now that, I, I think one of the things I might do is speak to the representatives here. And if nothing comes up on the record and, and if the, through the town administrator, it appears there's no other issue, to let the folks know that we, you know, although the hearing will be open and closed, we don't anticipate any further questions or, or issues raised by the town, in which case maybe they don't have to have a full panoply of folks here at the, at the next hearing.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Chairman, not having ever dealt with keeping a record open after closing a public hearing, I would, I would ask that we continue the public hearing to a date after March 12th. I intend to support this, but I just want to make sure we do it right.
The date would be March 22nd, so.
March 22nd, okay.
Before I, before I get into everything here, I'm gonna, Mr. Sagorino, I would just assume to keep, keep everything open until the 22nd, then close the public hearing, then close the meeting altogether, vote on this issue and go from there. Now, where they're, I don't think would be any, any, I don't know what word to use. I'm afraid to use any words now. I don't know what, what we could do. I would just assume to keep it all open at this point. I don't know how my board members feel about that, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's fine, Mr. Chairman. That, that, that works fine. Attorney Solomon pretty much just said we could do it either way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, so I would like to probably at this time take a motion to move this article to March 22nd.
Continue, continue.
Continue, I'm sorry. All right, we need a roll call vote, gentlemen.
Six, six thirty. At six thirty, sir.
Six thirty, I'm sorry. Six thirty. Thank you. So we'll go with the roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So the meeting has been moved to March 22nd at six thirty. Okay, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Very much. Good luck.
We're off. Nice seeing you, Bob.
Nice seeing you, Tom.
Okay, Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items left on the agenda, the budget guidelines, which may take a little bit of time, but we did have another public hearing on here that maybe we can get these folks moving along since we're off schedule a little bit. So if the board wishes, if we could advance item number 15, the all alcohol license for Bacito continuation.
Gentlemen, last time I did a show of hands, you guys all set to move this ahead? Everyone's got their thumbs up. Okay. So at this point here, we'll turn it over to Mr. Vaughn, I believe is here. Oh, there he is, to represent Bacitos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here tonight just to provide an update relative to the liquor license formerly held by Bacito at the Burlington Mall. As I think I've explained to the board before, the intention is to transfer this liquor license to Fogo de Chao, who is a Brazilian steakhouse restaurant that is going to be locating at the Burlington Mall. Just given the events of the past year, the timeline has obviously been affected by that. But I am pleased to be able to, you know, let you know that it is moving forward. Been in touch with, with Simon, with Fogo, and they have a, a deal in place for Fogo to be locating at the mall. Their anticipated opening is November of this year. So the transfer application will be submitted. I know I, I've said soon or imminently before, I don't have an exact date. I, I have to be candid with you, but all I know is based on my communications with them, that the intention is to be submitting that license transfer application very soon. I believe that Betty had requested that we get some communication directly from Fogo on that, which has been sent to the board as well. So obviously, this has been a very challenging year for restaurants in terms of, you know, not only closures, but openings that have certainly been delayed. And this is, you know, one of those openings that has been delayed by everything going on around us. But I, I think it's a positive piece of news that they are moving forward and looking to open and become part of the Burlington community this year. So appreciate the board's, you know, patience on this. I know, you know, with the restaurant, Bacito having been closed for some time, you know, but, so if, I was going to respectfully request if the board would consider continuing this for a further update until a meeting in April. Optimistic that by then, a transfer application would have been submitted, but rather than us having to come in, you know, every month for, for an update. But thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions on this? We'll start with Mr. Priest.
No question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, have you considered, or have you had any conversations about the comments that you and I shared at the last time we spoke about this, about the Bacito being a general townwide license? And the mall sitting on all those other licenses that they requested and got, so that we could have a license that we could share with somebody elsewhere in town?
I, I have had a preliminary dialogue with them. And as I had mentioned before, Selectman Hogan, that the, the mall very much anticipates utilizing the licenses that were granted by Town Meeting through that special legislation. It's been unfortunate that the past year has been what it is, but I can tell you right now that there are restaurants that we're working with to process applications before you in the very near future, such as, you know, Shake Shack for beer and wine. There's a restaurant, Gua Yu Kaku, that's going into that outbuilding at the mall next to where Cafe Nero is. We have Common Craft, which is a concept that was recently approved by the planning board that's coming forward. There's a restaurant called Palm. So th- those licenses will be utilized. And I think from the mall's perspective, they, you know, didn't want to necessarily take a step back and lose licenses that they already had. And, you know, look, I mean, that's not even including that the mall doesn't, Simon doesn't own where Macy's is. And I think, as the board knows, that, you know, the, the future of retail is, you know, a little bit of, of, of an odyssey right now. So I think there, you know, there's a a possibility that some of those licenses could be, you know, utilized there as well. But, but I, I think the intention, Mr. Hogan, is that those licenses are all going to be utilized, albeit it hasn't happened as quickly as, I don't think any of us here would, would like.
Well, just, just, you know, so you hear me saying what I'm thinking and have talked with other people about Bacito still owns the license. You, you kind of said that, you know, that previously owned the license. They were previously open, but they still own the license. And the mall doesn't. So it's not theirs, you know, to loot. It, it goes with the restaurant. So I, I think it's important that we keep the town's options open so that if a restaurant wants to open someplace other than the mall, we have a license available for them. And 19 licenses is a lot of licenses for the mall to have. And, you know, I think one more for the town wouldn't be such a big deal. I think it's important that we have that.
I am happy to communicate that to, to Simon, that, you know, but I, I obviously can't say anything further than what I've said tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vaughn will probably be directing this toward you, but, well, actually to the board as well. Obviously, we live in unprecedented times and we don't know what the future brings. And as a follow up to Mr. Hogan's question, is there any way we can have communication with Simon to see what their status is or what their master plan, so to speak, is? In other words, where they are, where they're hoping to go and, and try to answer out these, some of these questions as far as how many restaurants are coming in, how many, you know, retail, how retail, just kind of a status on, on the mall, which is
Yeah.
you know, a huge asset, just to get some sort of sense of where the mall is holistically.
Sure. I, I'd be happy to try to coordinate that with Simon. I actually was, you know, communicating very recently with John Phipps, who's the senior vice president. He's the gentleman that you may have recalled that, you know, we worked through the planning board process before and with the Selectmen and Town Meeting. And I'd be happy to, I, I think they are at a point now where they're, you know, about to, you know, recommence construction and work out there and be, be happy to try to coordinate something. But I, I, I don't have that answer, the Tigges.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Just as a follow up through you to maybe Mr. Sagorino, maybe we can, when we do get this update or something, try to involve our economic development director just to see what she has to offer as well as trying to figure out what this grand plan is for the mall. Absolutely, Selectmen Tigges, we can do that. I know that Melissa does have contact with the folks at Simon on a regular basis as well. I just think it'd be a good idea for us to see where they are, where they want to go, and try to get a, a sense of what we can do to, to help them succeed as well. Because we want them to succeed, but it'd be nice to know where they're at and where they're going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Priest?
Sir?
Yes. Any questions?
No.
Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I'm fine with moving this till April. But, but I would say that, you know, Bob's line of questioning is, is earlier question is, is certainly appropriate. And to Jim's point, we, actually, we did have a meeting with some of the folks from Burlington Mall with the Economic Development Subcommittee just a couple, a couple of months ago, just before the holidays. Not exactly an open book with those folks. They, they keep it pretty close to the vest. it pretty close to the vest what, what their plans are, but it was, I thought it was a productive meeting, and, um, I'm, I'm sure we can probably, uh, set up another one.
Yeah, I guess all I could say, well, I mean, I, I don't think anyone's trying to not be, uh, upfront in terms of what the future holds. I, I, I think it's really just a function of everything being so fluid, particularly over the past. I mean, look, I mean, think about it, right? I mean, I don't think anyone on this call would have predicted Lord &amp; Taylor, you know, going out of business, for example. Um, and just the, um, you know, devastation to a lot of, of retailers that are, you know, not opening up new stores or, or closing stores. So, um, I can assure you that, that, you know, the mall is, is very much, you know, they want to be a good partner with the town, and I think they recognize the asset as of critical importance to, uh, the town as it is to them. So I'd be happy to, you know, try to continue to, to foster that dialogue as we, as we move forward here.
You all set, Mike? Yes, okay. So, um, I agree with Mr. Hogan, Mr. Vaughn. Uh, there's a lot of things that we, we can probably talk about with all those licenses. There's a lot up there. Um, I kind of agree with Bob on this one, um, which we're in the alcohol, alcohol subcommittee together, so we could, we, I would like to sit down and discuss this with you and the mall to see where they're going, what they're doing with all these licenses. All right? At some point. No, I'm not against this at all. But no, it is what it is there. But I'd like to see where they're going with this. Okay?
I understand. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, so this is open, this is a public hearing, right, Paul? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this right now? Anybody out there on the phones or anything? Do we have anybody?
No one on the phones, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so do we want to make a motion to move this or prove it?
Continue.
Continue. I always say the wrong thing, don't I? Should we continue this? Well, these days I'll get it right. Another six years after these three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd, I'd make that motion that we continue, but I would need Paul or Betty to give me a date to put into the motion sometime in April or whatever works.
Mark, what works for you? April, May, June, July?
Um, you know, look, I mean, we're gonna, if, if they've got a November opening, it's gonna be getting in relatively soon. I just didn't want you to do it out, you know, a month, and then, you know, we haven't done it yet, and we're, I don't want to waste your time. I, I mean, if you're comfortable with May, that would just, um, you know, probably work. Yeah.
Betty, can you give me a date in May?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, either April, April 12th or April 26th.
Mark just said May would be good.
Oh, why don't we stick with April?
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Yeah, April, um, yeah, it's a good point. April 26th would be fine, if that's okay with the board.
Okay. Then I would make that motion. Oh, well, we'll continue with, uh, April 26th. What time?
6:30.
6:30. Okay. Thank you.
Because a motion would be made to move this to April 26th at 6:30. Do I have a second?
A second to continue it.
Continue. All right. We need a roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Mirandi, yes. Okay.
Right. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna put a big, big note up here that says continue, so I get the right wording in here. Thank you. All right. And then we're back to budgets guidelines.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item number 14, budget guidelines. Uh, uh, well, tonight we'll be looking for a vote to confirm the budget guidelines that we worked, uh, through with the Ways and Means Committee and the school administration. Uh, selectmen Mirandi and Tigges, uh, represented the board at those discussions. Uh, we have the finance team here for a presentation, and then we can get into some questions from the board.
Okay. We're right ahead, gentlemen.
All right. Uh, Whitney, first slide, please. All right. Well, one of the things we just wanted to remind everybody was, uh, last year was the first year where we actually, um, looked at the guidelines a little differently in that, uh, we recognized the fact that we don't actually control, um, both assets. We used to, we used to, uh, set a budget guideline for the tax levy and sp- uh, set spending guidelines. But either one of those, um, is dependent upon the other. So we switched to a system where either we're gonna set a maximum tax levy, or we're gonna set an operating budget and let that determine, uh, what the tax levy is. So just as a reminder to the board, and in fiscal '21, uh, the guideline we set was an, uh, operating budget increase of 3.5%. So that was for the current fiscal year that we're in right now. Uh, this is just a little bit of a reminder. Uh, last year, as you know, because of, uh, the pandemic, we had sort of a very unusual, uh, budget, uh, process. Uh, by the time the pandemic hit and the shutdown started to occur, um, we were very far along, um, in developing the budget. Uh, so the original guidelines that we set, uh, last December was 3.5 operating budget increase blended with the school, uh, three and a quarter for the town and 3.75 for the school. Uh, that was the guideline we set in December. Uh, the pandemic hit, uh, we developed a, a budget in June, and as you recall, uh, we asked, uh, Town Meeting, uh, to allow us until September to make some adjustments to the budget. But in June, we passed, um, the original guideline budget, and you can see the, the data right there. We ended up with, we hit the operating budget guideline, uh, 3.54, uh, accommodated accounts, which is the town's, uh, big budget buster accounts, like, uh, health insurance, trash, uh, special education. Uh, those came in at 5.58%. And ultimately, we ended up with a 5.54% tax levy increase. And, um, moving forward, we had to go back, uh, once we realized the, uh, impacts of the pandemic, we had to go back and make some adjustments in September. And again, we're very grateful to Town Meeting for allowing us to do this. Uh, I think it, it, it ended up being a much more, uh, thoughtful process. Uh, we had a couple more months of data to sort of understand where we were being impacted by the pandemic. And as a result of that, I think we were able to make, uh, some more thoughtful, uh, reductions to the budget. So in September, uh, we, as you recall, we made $2.1 million worth of cuts. Uh, that moved the blended operating budget increase down to 2.86, which is very low. Uh, our accommodated accounts, we shaved those down to 2.84, and we still had to utilize the 5.5% tax levy increase in order to balance the budget. And within those cuts, um, there were $350,000 worth of cuts to both the town and the school, which were a direct impact to services. Uh, so that was the status for last year. And as you know, um, when we set the tax rate last fall, uh, the board, uh, wasn't very pleased with the tax levy increase. So those particular guidelines, uh, the impact of those guidelines, we ended up with a $9.95 rate, uh, on the residents, uh, $25.84 on the commercial industrial. Uh, our average single-family tax bill was 57.11, and the average, uh, single-family tax bill increase was about $245. And as I recall it, I think in average, the average single-family house in town now is currently at approximately $570,000 is, is how we determine those, those figures. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, at this point, uh, John D'Nizio is gonna walk through, uh, uh, three major revenue categories, uh, local receipts, state aid, and the tax levy. John?
Thank you, Paul. Uh, so just talked a little bit about, about revenue sources. Paul just named the three. Uh, this group has, has heard this presentation, I, I believe, already, so I apologize for being repetitive. Uh, local receipts, this year, when we set the budget, um, back, you know, this time last year and submitted the budget, we were already looking at, at revenue projections that were down by about $4.5 million from our last non-COVID year. Then when we, like Paul said, we came back in, in Fall Town Meeting, and we had to, uh, scale those back another $2.1 million in September. And you've heard us talking time and time again of, of what the categories are that they hit the hardest. That's hotel, that's down 65%, meals tax down 35%, and permits down, uh, over 65%, 67%. So, uh, at this, going into next year, we'll be lucky to level fund the, we'll level fund this category for next year. The next, uh, category of revenues for us, state aid. Last year, we were lucky, and it was held harmless. That was mostly due to the federal revenues that were backfilling the state coffers at the time. Um, luckily, so far, the governor's budget has been released. And there was slight increases to state aid. Uh, so that's great news for us. We were worried that we could be looking at maybe a 10 or even 20% cut in this category, which to us would have translated to a million or mil- or $2 million. Also, we're, we're funding, uh, minimum aid increases in this category. And the third category is the tax levy. Uh, so when you're not funding much increases in the other two categories, that means the burden of any increase in our operating budget is gonna come, uh, on the backs of the taxpayers and the businesses in town. So this year, we had an increase of, of, of 5.5%, resulted in an increase of almost $250 on the average single-tax family, uh, single, single-family tax bill. And, uh, so, you know, we were working hard to, to try to do what we can for next year's budget to keep that. You know, we heard the, the board is like it loud and clear that that, that isn't the area that we want to be in. Uh, so we're working hard to scale that back. Um, I don't think we could do it all in one year, but we're working hard at that. Next slide is values, and I think, uh, Gary's gonna talk a little bit about the values.
Thank you, John. Uh, good evening, board. Mr. Chair. Uh, as, as we, we were, we've been going through the, uh, analysis, looking at the different avenues, the tax levy, well, the taxes raised by the residential and commercial sector account for probably 79% of the revenue. So that's a large share. The, uh, we know what's happened in the marketplace for residential. It has continued to, uh, be strong. On the commercial side, it's evident that, uh, with the closures in the retail sector, with the closure in the hospitality, the restaurants, uh, and with people staying home from the office, that the, it is a, a, going to be a change in values. What those are at this point, we don't know. Uh, if Jim was on the call, I don't believe he is, uh, he would discuss how the assessments are based on prior year's numbers. So the assessments we've been dealing with in this fiscal year is, we want it based on data from 2019. In the next, uh, few weeks, uh, data will be coming in for this past year. And, uh, office sector is gonna have some weakness, but probably not as much as the retail and hospitality. Uh, Jim and the assessors have a difficult job in, in, in front of them, uh, looking at this, but I think it would be safe to say there's gonna be some, uh, decrease in value. What that decrease is, uh, we don't, we'd be guessing. And we try not to do that. We, we have looked at some different numbers. Uh, the, uh, certain shifts could create a higher tax bill if we, uh, continued, uh, to operate as we, as we have in the past. So we've looked at all those different, uh, factors. The, uh, I think that's really it. We don't want to commit to a decrease since we don't have that. Again, that's up to the assessors, as they, uh, work through the values, but it's safe to say there'll be some change in the, that breakdown. Right now, the, uh, as of past year, the residential, uh, valuation was 46 million, and the commercial was about 72 million. I think that's really it. I, I, Paul?
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen. Uh, so, uh, the budget goals for the upcoming fiscal year's budget, uh, very similar, uh, to what we always strive for here in Burlington. Um, we want to maintain, uh, level of services where possible. Um, I will tell you that, uh, based upon these guidelines tonight, um, we probably will not end up with a, a level services budget. There will be cuts, uh, and reductions in services, uh, on the town and part, and the school side. Uh, so I just want to be clear about that, that we're definitely not maintaining services from last year. Uh, but again, very difficult situation. Uh, we always want to prioritize our investment in our infrastructure. Um, as you know, we have a very well-developed capital plan. Uh, we've been making some significant investments in, uh, buildings and roads and water. Um, so we want to make sure that, uh, we're able to look out for the town's future, uh, by, uh, being able to continue to, uh, reinvest in the community. Um, there's always been a stated goal here in Burlington. We like to minimize the amount of fees. Um, I think everybody knows, if you go to another community, there are fees for everything. Uh, we try to minimize those to whatever extent possible we can. Um, we're gonna have to, going forward, continue to adjust our plan, uh, for long-term liabilities. Uh, one of our larger cuts, uh, to balance the budget in the current year was to make a significant cut to our OPEB, uh, contribution. Uh, that's a voluntary payment, and, uh, when we instituted that, we agreed that if times got tough, that we would make that cut. Uh, but it's still a very important, uh, program, uh, for the town, and we want to get back to sort of addressing that long-term liability as quickly as we can, once we get back on our feet financially. And lastly, I mean, this is something we've haven't had to do in budgets past, because, uh, we typically, in Burlington, we have a, a balanced budget, a sustainable budget, uh, where we only use regular revenues to pay for the regular bills of the town. Um, we do not use reserves in the operating budget process. Uh, however, uh, you know, given the unique circumstances, we will most likely, uh, be requesting to use reserves for something in the upcoming year. And the key is, once you start using reserves to fund the operating budget, uh, we really need to come up with a plan to stop using reserves to fund the operating budget. So that's always the trick when you're using reserves, uh, for operating. Uh, you, you, you can't just use them like that forever. Uh, we have to have a way to stop using them and get back to having a budget where our regular revenue, uh, matches our regular expenditures. Okay, as we, uh, move forward, so the board is aware, um, these are our reserves as we speak. Uh, free cash after January Town Meeting, about 16.1 million. Uh, that's a fantastic number, uh, for us, but I just wanted to let you know it's planned. Uh, we didn't actually create a lot of free cash, uh, over the past year. Uh, most of that increase was based on the fact that, as you guys recall, we had to make, uh, some very difficult cuts to the capital plan last year. So, uh, we only spent the bare minimum on capital, um, as opposed to what we would normally spend to keep up with the capital plan. And as a result of that, we had more free cash left over, uh, because we didn't spend it. Uh, the town's rainy day fund stabilization, uh, a little bit below $10 million in our excess levy capacity, uh, which is the amount below Prop 2.5, uh, taxing capacity that we are. Uh, but again, uh, we can only access those funds by raising taxes, uh, significantly. So, uh, those are technically what we have for reserves heading into this budget process. Next slide. Okay. So here we are. Here's a little bit of detail about a possible use of reserves in the upcoming year. Um, and this is sort of a, um, a ranking, um, of the priority. Uh, but one way that we could use reserves is if we get any further cuts or if the state, uh, announces that they will need to make cuts to state aid, uh, we would most likely request that we use reserves to, uh, replace that revenue if it gets cut at this late of a date. Uh, the good thing about using reserves in this way is we can stop using reserves as that money, uh, as that funding, uh, comes back into play over the next few years, hopefully. Uh, the next area where we may have to consider using reserves is, uh, for targeted use, uh, for deficit accounts. Uh, in particular, I'm thinking about snow and ice. Um, we typically try to fund that within the confines of our budget, but, um, with things as tight as they are now, uh, we may have to consider using, uh, free cash for that. Uh, the next possible way to use free cash, and this is, uh, a discussion we would probably have, um, around September Town Meeting, uh, once we have a better idea where, uh, we stand on the budget. But, you know, there's the potential, uh, you- But, you know, there's the potential to utilize reserves to lower the tax rate. And I know that that's something that's been brought up by the board in previous years. So that's a discussion that we'll be having on an ongoing basis with ways and means with the board as we move through the budget process. In terms of the capital plan, we will be requesting only the most urgent capital items this year. Obviously, if we're gonna be in a process where we're gonna be utilizing reserves, we need to make sure that we still have reserves in the event we need them in the future. So unfortunately, we'll have to limit capital spending to real priority items. And lastly, and this is the last resort, but it is also a possible use of reserves, and that would be to supplement operating budget. This is probably the least favorable way to use reserves, but everybody needs to be aware that we may have some very difficult decisions moving through the budget process, and there may be some cuts proposed that the community is not willing to allow, in which case, you know, we would probably recommend utilizing free cash to maintain, maintain those services. Okay, fiscal twenty-two. I'm gonna turn it back over to John from this point.
Thank you, Paul. So this is just a couple of assumptions and what the effects are on the FY twenty-two operating budget. Yeah, so we, as I was talking about earlier when we were reviewing revenues, was that we're projecting no or very little increase in local receipts and state aid number. And Paul talked about backfilling any, any decrease in, in these, these budgets with reserves. So that's one of the things we're just trying to highlight, that it's as important to know how you're gonna wean yourself off of reserves as it is to decide how much to use. So we think that's a good category to use it for because there's a organic way to wean yourself off of that. As those revenue numbers start coming back up, you use less and less free cash. We wanted to be realistic in, in accommodated counts. We've done some work, worked really hard to get that number as early as we can. We think that in that range of five, five and a half percent is a good spot. We think we can make that. Originally, we had set a budget guideline recommendation of three percent blended rate, which was about two point seven five for the town and about two point, three point two five for the schools. After a bunch of the meetings we had and a bunch of discussion, administration increased that to a blended rate of three point two, which is three percent for the town, about three percent for the town and about three point five for the schools. Important to know that, and Paul said earlier, that even at this level, it doesn't, it's not enough for either side to meet the mission. But we're gonna work really hard to try to get there and limit any cuts in services or programs or personnel. And as we said earlier, we took the board's comments very seriously last year when we said the tax rate, and this should allow us to control the tax levy increase and fall within that four and a half or five percent range, scaling back from last year from five point five percent, scaling back a little bit from there. Next slide? So this was the original, the original recommendation of the administration, which you can see, you know, expecting a five point two five accommodated and the two schools, the school and town number. We would have estimated the levy increase at about four point eight. Like I said, after the discussion and some, some sharing of some modeling, next slide. You know, the three percent really was gonna be, was gonna be, cut the level of services a little beyond where we thought was doable. So we did change the rate, as I talked about before. You can see what does that do? You know, if we make that five point five for accommodated and the school and town come in around that blended rate of three point two five, we expect to be just under five percent. So we'll work hard to make sure we get there.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I believe that's all for the presentation, so the team's here available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, that's a lots of comprehending one sitting, but we saw it before, so, and I believe Mr. Janeino was right. We did hear, we did hear from the assessors' office on this last time we talked about it. It said quite a few things about abatements and so forth and hard to determine what we're gonna be giving up or getting back on, putting out this, this stuff. And you know what? I think tonight I'm gonna start with Mr. Runyon on this one. Because we're both on the same page with this, Mike. Time to cancel the rainy day fund.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, gosh. Yeah, I hate having these discussions, but so what's our, what's our current operating budget? And what is the anticipated twenty twenty-two budget?
Dollar amount?
Ballpark. I don't need, I don't need to be specific.
Well, the total expenditures for the, for the year, about a hundred fifty-five million. So you need to bring that back at present. The operating budget looks like it's about ninety, ninety million, ninety-three, ninety-four million.
All right, but a, but a total, a total budget for the year, isn't it in a one forty or so, one forty range?
Five for total expenditures.
One fifty-five, okay. So I guess what I'm, what troubles me, well, in December, anyway, back in December is, you know, for, for years, for decades, decade, anyway, we've, we've been able to have a tax levy increase in the, in the range of three percent, three and a half percent roughly, year over year. Last year, we went to five, and you're looking at another five for the current fiscal, for the, for the next fiscal year. So what's driving, what's, what's, what's driving that increase in the last couple of years?
So, selectmen, one piece of the formula is that we're not, this, this year in particular, we're not increasing the other revenue categories. So it's all being, coming at the, on the backs of the one category of the tax levy. So that's the same for last year. We didn't increase either one of those numbers. In fact, we ended up decreasing it. So all the pressure of those increases are coming on just the tax levy side. So as those categories come back and over the years, we've increased the local receipts a little bit every year. As we, you know, we're seeing higher and higher receipts, we were able to offset some of the increase by the other revenue categories. And last year, when we were five point five, and this year, when we expect to be in the fours, those revenue categories aren't increasing.
Right, I get it. Paul, let me ask you this. We, you, you hinting at, at a possible reduction in, in services. I, I, I don't expect you to be specific, but could you maybe give us an idea if we had to make some cuts? Any idea where we would be looking?
Selectmen, as you know, I mean, the, the town side budget is pretty much salary. So whenever we're talking about reductions, typically, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, consolidating positions or losing, losing employees through attrition or whatnot. So the budget's about eighty percent salaries in general on the expense side. So there's really no way, no way around it. I think we did a lot of shaving in the accommodated last year. If we have to make reductions here, it'll have to come to budgets. As you recall, just on the previous year, we, we took out a police officer position. John, there was a few more reductions there.
Yeah, there was.
Quick words, yeah.
Yep, and we didn't, we didn't fill some positions that were vacated, and we reduced some hours of operation and some part-time people, reduced some FTEs. So it'll be more of the same.
All right, so, so tonight, you're, you're asking us to approve these budgets with, with these numbers that you presented. But there's, there's some wiggle room there. I mean, this is, I mean, we may, over the next several months, find creative ways to reduce some spendings and potentially lower that projected levy rate for the, for next year.
That will be the goal, Mike. And again, I think typically the budget process is pretty rigid, where we get the budget set in May, and then that's what we have to work with for the next year. But I think, you know, similar to last year, this is gonna be a very fluid budget process. You know, as we work our way through the summer, we may have to agree to something at May town meeting. And then, again, just be prepared to make adjustments to that budget by September, whether that is, you know, adding services back in, whether that is using reserves to fund, you know, one of those items that we mentioned. I think it's gonna be a give and take process from the time we, as we work through this, straight through September again. So I think that, you know, we'll be looking for good news where we can to try to make some offsets on the revenue side. We'll have more information as to how the local economy sort of bounces back once we get, hopefully get, you know, fully reopened at some point. So I think, again, similar to last year, the time is our ally, so the longer, you know, as we go, as we go further along, we'll have to make adjustments, whether things are going worse or better than expected.
Okay, all right. I, you know, I truly appreciate the, the effort and the amount of time that all of you, Whitney included in addressing these items. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the team, what kind of things will we be looking at to give us an indication, if it's a thumbs up or thumbs down going into the spring, summer, and then into the fall of next year, as to where we are as far as our financials?
So I think, Paul, do you allow me to talk to that?
Yes, please, John.
So I, I think the plan would be to go into the spring. We'll continue to be looking at the state aid numbers. We'll see if there's any, if there's any movement there. We'll really continue to scrutinize our, our local receipts numbers to see if there's, if there's any reason for optimism or a need to backfill that. So I feel like we'll come to the spring town meeting. The plan would be to have the budget balanced, and then as we continue to collect the data into the fall, that would be where, where we would decide that the, you know, we're past our pain threshold on a levy number, or we actually think we may be able to increase some revenue categories, or hopefully not, the opposite. Does that answer your question, Paul?
Thank you, yes. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For a minute, if you could humor me, do we have any long-range understanding of what fiscal twenty-three is gonna look like?
Well, I, I can, if I may, Paul. I would think from the valuation standpoint, again, I don't want to answer for the assessors. The, hopefully, the retail sector will come back. I think it's gonna be a while for the hospitality, for the hotel sector, maybe take a little longer. And from the office standpoint, that sector of the valuation could have a long-term effect. Because leases are going to come up for renewal. Some businesses are gonna look for less space. So that, that is the downside. The upside for the, for the community is the life science aspect. If, if that, and that's the, the growth side in the economy right now, if some companies come into Burlington, that would be in the positive side. I do think it's twenty-three won't be, well, I don't even want to say that. The shift may not be as, as dramatic at twenty-three, but hopefully some of those revenues will be back in, in twenty-three to offset some of that. It's difficult. I think Paul and John and Jim, we've talked about sort of bumping along into twenty-three from the valuation period and see where we are. We tried to take a couple of, a year look at.
Nick, just to add on to that, you know, there's obviously many different factors in the calculation, and Gary just spoke about the valuations, which, you know, are a little fuzzy in a couple of years from now. But we're hopeful revenues in the other categories will be coming back by then. And then obviously, there's a calculation for the expense side too, that we, you know, stuff just costs more as you go along. So we do talk about this. We do talk about a five, a multi-year, five-year plan, what it looks like. But truly, right now, we're guessing more than ever right now, just given what's going on in the global economy, we're, you know, winging it.
No, I completely understand. Obviously, you know, like other members of the board have expressed, we appreciate all of the effort that, you know, the team puts into looking at this and having these conversations. And, you know, I think that, you know, we're, we're obviously in a perfect storm situation where none of us want to be. You know, but obviously, I think that the things that we care most about are maintaining, you know, people's jobs that, you know, have committed themselves to the town of Burlington, as well as keeping our tax rate as low as humanly possible. And, you know, obviously, in years like this, those things conflict with each other. You know, we have to do our best to rectify them with as minimal, you know, fallout as humanly possible. You know, I, I know it's a blended rate. I don't love the fact that, you know, the schools always seem to come in on top, you know, of that, of that scenario. And I understand, obviously, they're educating the, the young minds of Burlington, so obviously, I'm not trying to, you know, pass judgment or, or, you know, but, you know, in a situation where we're a community and working together as one, you know, we're all taking it on the chin, hopefully equally. With all that being said, you know, you've, you've heard my, my rants and concerns before. You know, I'm in favor of using free cash or stabilization how we see fit to, you know, minimize the effects that it would have on our community here. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're thinking of a plan to wean us off said use of dollar amounts, you know, which is why I ask about, you know, fiscal twenty-three and beyond is, you know, like, how easy will it be for us to, you know, suddenly stop, you know, with our, with our hand in the cookie jar, so to speak? But, yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. So thank you all for your, your time and effort, and I hope that we can come out of this as unscathed as humanly possible.
Thank you. Mr. Tejas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We often refer to the stabilization fund as the rainy day fund. And this isn't a rainy day. I don't know what is. But under that hierarchy of reserve spun, reserve fund expenditures, if we had to go into reserve funds, under targeted usage, there's that, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to make sure this is something we can even look at. We said one of the options for the target, targeted usage would be snow and ice removal because it's not a fixed expense. But other things I was thinking about were, can we use that, that targeted use? Or can we use these emergency funds, so to speak, for emergencies? In other words, if we have a water break, can, it's not a, it's a one-time event. It's, it's not coming back, hopefully. Or say we have a, a heating system fail or equipment go down, they're one-time deals. They're, they're not supposed to happen regularly. Can, on that targeted usage, can we use these funds? Because they're not in the budget. We pay for them to get fixed, and hopefully, nothing happens again. So I'm just thinking that maybe if we target the targeted to, like, instead of, say, we have a major fire, which hopefully we don't, and there's a ton of overtime, maybe we can use the stabilization for that because it's a one-time only event, and it's not gonna, we, we don't need to go back to it the following year. Is that something we can look at and do?
No, absolutely. And we use snow and ice is probably the easiest example for everyone to sort of, you know, get a grasp of the type of one-time accounts that we are talking about. But there certainly could be others, and there are other one-time things, and there are other one-time ways to utilize the funds. You know, another example would be if, if we had to anticipate, you know, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, uh less people working, you know, we could use uh reserves to fund the unemployment costs for those employees. You know, it's one time theoretically. Um it reduces itself over time. Uh so we reduce our reliance on using that reserve. But there are, we will certainly be considering a lot of ways, and and you are correct. There are many uh different uh ways that we could very, you know, smartly use those funds to target uh different accounts. Okay, then, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's just a default. But I mean, I think we do have to start looking at that rainy day fund and um again, under the targeted usage, let's look at the one-time expenses, the expenses that we know we have to pay for, but we're not budgeting down the road. And that's that's all for now. You're unmuted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One day I'll remember. Um so anyway, Gary, John, Paul, you heard some uh really good ideas here tonight. Uh we're trying to keep it as low as possible. Uh we all know that. So with that being said, I the rainy day funds, it seems like the way it's going to go, if we're going to keep these people from being not employed, or laying people off, or cutting other things out of budgets and stuff like that, which is something we really want to do. But on the other hand, we have to be very, very careful with the commercial side. We work too much on the commercial side. They're already not there now. They're already losing money. We're already getting payments. It 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 Nick said it, Mike said it five weeks ago. It's a perfect storm coming up. We're going to be in trouble. So um we're all going to put our thinking hats on and get to work on this, right? All I can say. Uh so we're going to uh go ahead and approve these budget guidelines right now.
Yes, can we have a vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, I'm going to look for a uh motion.
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh I will make the recommendation, and Paul, make sure I get this right, okay? We're looking for the three point two five blended rate, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I would make the recommendation that we approve the three point two five blended rate, which is uh three point five on the school side and three on the town side with the tax estimated levy at four point nine nine percent.
Motion to have a second by Jim. Uh here we go, roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Five zero zero in favor. Okay, there we go. And we're going to move right off to uh already did that, subcommittees. I start with uh Mr. Priest.
Uh in the interest of time, I'll keep this short tonight. A lot of irons in the fire, so to speak. Um obviously, economic development, Melissa's doing a fantastic job of um forging forward with relationship building and, as uh Mike had mentioned in our last meeting, working on a website. Um and really keeping things going for her. So I hope that uh coming off of this budget guideline conversation, that she can really help um us lay the foundation and the framework for what is to come, um you know, between life sciences and whatever new uh blended use, um you know, businesses seek uh as their as their footprints reduce. Um I sec uh met at the same time in our last meeting and as well as tonight, so I'll take a picture with them later. Um and uh, you know, uh obviously, uh sorry, folks, one second. Uh nothing, nothing but good times here. Uh but um yeah, that's about it for for tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I I would like to uh ask that uh we we do something positive as far as uh making a public statement in support of the Board of Health uh and the struggles they're having as far as uh getting from the state the COVID vaccine. Uh I know our letter by itself isn't going to make vaccine or make it available, but I think we need to go on record as supporting the work and the effort that the Board of Health is going through uh so that the state knows and the people in town know that we're supporting what the Board of Health is doing. So uh I would hope that maybe uh sometime this week or before the next meeting, at the very least, we could uh put something together for us to approve to do just that. Um also, if we could, uh maybe prior to uh the Maytown meeting, is have a strategic planning meeting to go over all of this information that we went over tonight uh to see if there's any updates or any any work we need to do at that point, because there's, you know, there's no guarantee that we're going to have a a overnight turnaround. So maybe we could consider putting something on the agenda for uh end of April, early May. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh before I move along, Bob, one more thing, I think. I don't know if I heard it or not, but I just want the town to understand it's not it's not us that didn't get the shots. It's the state didn't give them to us.
Oh, no, absolutely. It's the state. We want them to hear from us.
Mentioned in there or not, but I want to make sure that all the residents know it's not it's not from us. The state did not give us the shots, and that's what Mr. Hogan was referring to.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman.
Uh Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on that, the state delivers them to us. They don't deliver them, we don't get them. But uh anyway, Bob, I agree with you a hundred percent. We should show the Board of Health our support. Uh with regards to the fire department, as with every storm, and it looks like we're going to get a snowstorm, we'll be getting um one every now and then. Uh the fire department has to increase their staff to clear out the fire hydrants. They did that last week, but they also want to thank the residents uh who did help out and dig out some of the fire hydrants uh by their homes. Uh and a follow-up to the vaccine for first responders, this week, the public safety starts their second dose of the COVID vaccine. And both uh police and fire would like to thank uh Board of Health Director Susan Lominallo and her staff for planning and operating the vaccine clinics. Uh last week, the Mass Office of Emergency Medical Services went to the fire department and inspected the ambulance policies and procedures relating to the ambulance service. And it's also part of the annual recertification licensure for ALS to operate. And the inspector, the state inspector is actually quite impressed on Burlington's uh you know, policies, procedures, and the way it's laid out, especially especially since they're a newer ALS provider. And we want to thank Lieutenant Moxia and firefighter paramedic Thomas Monagle, who worked with the state inspector and helped get everything going on ALS. Uh we did have a graduate from the Fire Academy, firefighter paramedic Shane Yandel, graduated from the academy firefighter last week. He'll be on a two-week orientation, then he gets assigned to a shift. And finally, the state fire marshal has declared this week Burn Awareness Week. Uh and the this year's theme is electrical safety. So more information can be found on the American Burn Association uh website and their Twitter page. Thank you.
Mr. Runyon?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh just a a follow-up to Bob's comments um regarding the vaccine. Um yeah, I'm 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 fine with, uh you know, lending our voice to the chorus of um communities that uh are having issues with the vaccine. I know the state's doing the best they can. Uh I would uh I would uh maybe include uh in in a in a letter, uh if we do send one, uh some sort of offer to to assist them and and helping them any way we can to to make it, excuse me, a more efficient uh efficient rollout of the vaccine. Um but on another note, DPW, I mean, um the the good news just keeps on coming uh here in Burlington in terms of grants from the state. Uh we received uh a grant uh for some sidewalk improvements here in Burlington. And uh I'm I'm happy to announce that we will be completing the uh the stretch of uh roadway along Terrace Hall Ave um from uh roughly Hallmark Garden all the way down to the Middlesex Turnpike. So that's been something that's been on our radar uh for quite some time. So uh um great news, great news there, and and good work, uh DPW, um you know, going after that, those that grant money. Uh nice job again for DPW. And uh finally, listen, I'd like to just offer my um my my heartfelt thanks to uh a longtime member of the Burlington Housing Partnership Committee, Phyllis Etzel. Uh she's been on the committee since uh since we began, you know, well over twenty years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. Um Phyllis has been a, you know, a a wonderful asset to that committee. She's she's got a terrific background, uh which was absolutely suitable for for the job. Um so again, thank her for for all her years of service on that committee. Uh she's her 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 knowledge and experience is is definitely going to be be missed. And um uh just staying on topic quickly, and I'll get get out of here, is uh the town recently held a lottery, one of the uh one of the units at Seven Springs, one of our affordable uh inventory came back up for resale recently. Um we had a very good um a a amount of applicants this time around. There were twenty-five applicants. Uh I think fourteen of them were were local residents, so uh uh good job to uh everyone involved, uh getting the word out and marketing uh to Burlington residents. Um and I I I anticipate, I anticipate um that we'll have something else coming up in April of this year, another opportunity for for first-time home buyers out there. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I jump in before you start? I have one quick thing I want to add to what
Apparently, yes.
Talking about. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um when we were cleaning the hydrants, uh at least in our neighborhood, some of the kids in the neighborhood asked how many hydrants there are in town. Um Mike probably knows this number, but I didn't know. So I called the chief. One thousand two hundred and seventy hydrants have to be cleaned every time there's a snowstorm. That's why the fire department needs our help, the citizens, to go out and shovel hydrants uh to give those guys a break. Um because there's a lot of them. Thank you.
Isn't there a isn't there a criteria for twelve feet around the complete hydrant, something like that? That works. You're not going to dig out a foot and a half, but didn't they, didn't they, at one point, they said it was four, to dig out four feet around?
Well, they have to be able to get in there to to hook up the hoses and everything. So I would imagine more than just a foot or foot and a half would be important.
Mike, you know that number?
Well, it for me, it's about a foot and a half. For uh for some other guys, it's four feet.
All right, thank you. I uh I really don't have any report. I know uh I got nothing. I got nothing. I did my thing tonight earlier. All right. So uh Chairman's report. Done. Town Administrator, sir, what do you have for us?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. And uh just to echo uh the board's uh words about the Board of Health, I, as you know, we've been communicating a lot on what's been going on with the vaccines. And again, the state has a very difficult jobs as well. Um so I've reached out to Susan this morning just to try to figure out who we could make our plea to, to have the most impact on this. It's actually even worse, uh in the sense that um we're told that we're getting a hundred, and we make the appointments for the citizens, and then we actually have to go back once they tell us, hey, they're not coming. Uh we got to get back in contact with all these folks, and obviously, they're very upset about it. Uh so I mean, the Board of Health trains for this. Uh we train for this every year for a pandemic, to have to vaccinate a lot of people. And it would really be great if we were able to get that vaccine, because I'm 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 confident that nobody could do it more efficiently than the system they have. Uh we've been requesting eight hundred doses a week. We could give eight hundred out in a day. Uh but unfortunately, I I do know that the vaccine is scarce. Uh but, you know, I think it's, they there just has to be a way to get it um into the hands of the local communities. Again, we we are one hundred percent ready to do this, and the Board of Health trains for this every single year to deal with just this situation. So uh we will try to put together a letter on that and uh have you guys take a look at it. Uh and then just lastly, I just want to point out uh kudos to the DPW, uh two very difficult storms this week. Uh just as a reminder to everybody, uh thirty-one miles of sidewalks are done, uh about a hundred miles of roadway that they have to keep clear. So I think they did a great job, and uh it takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot out of the personnel. Uh they work a lot of hours to get this stuff cleared, and uh I think they did a great job. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman? You're muted. Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Okay, once again.
Real quick.
I said, I said about the snow plowing, it was wonderful, and it was Super Bowl Sunday. To watch Tom Brady win another Super Bowl was fantastic. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
No, I'm not muted. What?
Well, no, no, no. The fire the fire chief has reached out to me and to let me know it is three feet around. The uh so Mike, you're going to have to do a little double time there.
All right, beautiful. All right, gentlemen, we're all set. Uh can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, everyone seconded it. Good. All right, roll call vote. Uh Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Good night, gentlemen. Thank you very much.